Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, and welcome to our Portsmouth City Council meeting. And to my colleagues. Before we begin the meeting, and I call the order to meeting to order, I want to recognize to the dais Ms. Monica Mayfield, our deputy city clerk, who will be joining us for the meeting. Welcome, Monica. I will now ask for everyone to please stand for a moment of silence, and afterwards, we will do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Present.
Mr. Hugel?
Present.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Glover?
Here. Before we move and proceed with the agenda, we do have a matter that is council-related to my colleague, Councilman Barnes. We did pass a resolution that prohibited recording items on the dais, and that was a council rule. The majority of council put that new council rule in place. As such, all must abide by the rules. And you are welcome to set your camera behind the podium, sir. And I would ask that you do that at this time. If you are unwilling to do that, you will be out of order, and then I will ask you to be removed from the meeting. It is your choice, sir. Do you intend to move the camera, sir? Mr. Sergeant of Arms, would you please remove him from the meeting?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, the rules speak to recording devices. If that device isn't recording, is that outside of our rules?
Sir, the device is not allowed.
So does that mean our cell phones aren't allowed?
Sir, we didn't discuss our cell phones are allowed. Our cell phones are not positioned in that posture, and they are not in the mode of recording. That is what the rule stated, and that is the rule we must all abide by.
I just want to make sure that if it's not recording, then it's not outside of the guidelines or within the guidelines.
The guidelines are clear, sir. It's not allowed. Thank you. I would like to now call attention to the minutes of a call meeting on February 28th, 2023, and a regular meeting on February 28th, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We do have a need to finish some business that was previously done yesterday, and so we will need a motion, first, a motion to add an agenda item regarding the termination of the city assessor and the appointment of the interim city assessor.
Mayor, I move to add two items to the agenda regarding the termination of the city assessor and the appointment of a interim city assessor.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item number two, we do have a need to have a motion in a second to terminate city assessor Patrick Doris pursuant to Section 3A1 of his contract effective immediately with six months severance paid to be in accordance with sections. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I move to terminate city assessor Patrick Doris pursuant to Section 3A3A1 of his contract effective immediately with six months severance to be paid in accordance with Section 3B of his contract.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
So, question, Ms. Mayor.
You have the floor, sir.
Yes, I'll be voting no. I want to thank Mr. Doris for his courageous moral service. I believe that what is happening has nothing to do with anything regarding Mr. Doris's performance as far as city assessors concerned. What you're seeing happening here, which persons who are seeking the truth would have to take into account, is that Mr. Doris exposed some things that some people in this city were being privileged by. He exposed the fact that we have a golf course that hasn't paid real estate taxes in over 50 years. He exposed the aggressive use of tax liens on the Sugar Hill property, the black community in which the city obtained those properties. And so I think it was his moral courage and also standing up against some of the privileged persons in this city. And whenever you have elections, we represent interests. And I think what you're seeing happening is that there's an interest on this council that is very pro-status quo, good old boy system. And so I'm glad that Mr. Doris had the moral courage to stand up against that.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item number three, we need a motion to appoint our interim city assessor.
Mayor, I move to appoint Janie Callpepper as interim assessor with a start date of March 15th, 2023, and a salary of $120 per year, subject to execution of a contract to be approved and finalized by the personnel committee.
We have a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Yes. And follow-up on our discussion yesterday, the criteria for serving in this capacity requires a college degree. Was that confirmed?
The only criteria, that was a job description. The charter does not require a college degree, so that was just a job description that went out in a solicitation. It said experience. So to your question, absolutely, a degree was mentioned on the solicitation. The charter does not require a college degree, sir.
So as far as the solicitation is concerned, because we were requiring the college degree for those who were to pursue this position, then appointing someone without that criteria, it would seem to be an appointment that would be in violation of the criteria of that job description.
The appointment is not in violation because experience is certainly applicable to what the charter ultimately says. So, no, it is not in conflict, sir.
Well, I just want to express that I think that that sets a bad precedent.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mayor Glover?
And I forgot, yes, we did introduce. No, we're all done. So we moving on to the next item. Those items are done. If we could now have you, Madam Clerk, to read the council rules.
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of the city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. We've now come to the agenda item, public hearing, item 23-88A, UP 22-20. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution or the public hearing item for this number?
Yes, sir. Prentice Place, resolution granting the request of Safe Harbor Behavioral Healthcare LLC for a use permit for a halfway house on the .12 acre property at 1820, 1820 Prentice Avenue in the multifamily urban residential zoning district. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed residential. The property is owned by L. Luis Lucas. Planning Commission recommends approval with condition. And the resolution reads, "A resolution granting a use permit, UP 22-20, to Safe Harbor Behavioral Healthcare LLC to operate a halfway house at 1820 Prentice Avenue."
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present? Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Tim Webb. I'm the chief executive officer for Safe Harbor Behavioral Health at 2700 London Boulevard here in Portsmouth. We have, Safe Harbor has been here, we've been in business since March 1 of 2018. At the London Boulevard site, we initially opened 26 beds of residential treatment services for adults with addictive disease. Over the past several years, that campus has grown to 30 beds. All 30 of the beds that we currently operate at 2700 London are for veterans of the armed forces who have substance abuse issues. So we provide 45 to 90 days of residential care for them there, and then they're able to move on to a lower level of care. We also operate 20 beds of residential treatment at, on Elm Avenue on a property adjacent to the Prentice site, at 1819 Elm. That program serves primarily Medicaid and Department of Corrections individuals as well as some overflow with our veterans, because as all of you know, we have, in the Hampton Roads area, we have the highest population of veterans of anywhere in the world. And we all know, unfortunately, that too many of our veterans have substance abuse issues and have been very much underserved. So currently, we operate the two programs with 50 beds. We also operate an outpatient program on Queen Street in the old dialysis center that's directly across the parking lot from Maryview Hospital. We operate a partial hospitalization program where folks will come in the morning, they'll be there throughout the day for about six hours. We also operate an intensive outpatient program, three evenings a week. The intensive outpatient program right now is all veterans. The partial program is a combination of veterans and Medicaid recipients, primarily veterans. What we want to do at the house on Prentice is open what, in the city's language, would be a halfway house. In recovery language, it would be a sober living house or sober living environment. So we'd like to open up eight beds there at 1820 Prentice with a 24-hour-a-day, 365-house manager, who would be someone that would be on our payroll to supervise the operation. Anyone who works with addiction knows that we can do wonderful things in 45 to 90 days with someone, but then where are they going to go after that? And too often, I've had people who, once we get done with them, they have nowhere to go. Most of our veterans that we serve are homeless. At least 50% of them are homeless. And unfortunately, the VA, as much as they do, as much as they try, they're unable to accommodate everybody when it comes to housing. So what we'd like to be able to do is step people down from our residential program into that halfway house on Prentice, where they could then receive services in our partial hospitalization program for up to six months, and then potentially in our intensive outpatient program for the next year or so, get a job, save their money, truly get themselves habilitated, and then be able to step back down into the community in a much more effective way. As I said, we've been in Portsmouth now since March 1 of 2019. I think at this point, we have been, we've not only been financially successful, we've been very successful with our outcomes, with patients. And we've, we try to be good stewards here. We try to be involved in the community. We've done meals for folks at Thanksgiving there at the Elm Avenue site. We have sponsored AAU basketball teams. We're sponsoring a couple of kids this summer in the Palace program. Done bookbag drives and ice cream and those kinds of things for kids at London Oaks. It's important to me, as someone who works in Portsmouth and has been fortunate enough to earn a nice living in Portsmouth, to be part of the city. So I live in Portsmouth. I could walk to my apartment in five minutes from here in Old Town. It's important to me that we use contractors, that we use places like Creative Business Solutions for shirts and mugs and whatever else we use, that we use vendors that are here locally, and that we give back. So it's important to me that we do those things, whether it's meals or it's offering up meeting space for the Prince Park Civic League. We've done that with Bishop Randall. But I'm proud not only to work in Portsmouth, but to live in Portsmouth and be part of Portsmouth. And we would like the opportunity to serve our veterans, again with those eight beds, where they could truly rehabilitate themselves. I don't, I'm not here to waste your time with a whole lot more in terms of words. I'm certainly here, though, to answer any questions you might have of me.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Are there any questions from my colleagues on council? One question I have, sir. Were you able to talk to the Civic League or any community organizations and provide or get any feedback? Were they in support of your project?
Yes, sir. I apologize. I should have said that from the beginning. We met with the Prentice Park Brighton Civic League, and they were very supportive. We explained what we do, what we want to do, what we've been doing in the backyard at Elm Avenue. And there were, there was no resistance. Everyone was very, very supportive, and we plan on being a part of that Civic League.
Okay. Very good. In addition to that, I know you said you had individuals that are going through different, difficult challenges in their lives. How do you handle the security situation?
So if you look at, in recovery language, most sober living homes, they typically are self-governed, so there's not a staff member there. They vote people in, they vote people out, they set their own rules. I'm not willing to do that. We will have a 24-hour-a-day staff member there who is responsible to me to ensure safety, security, those kinds of things. Also, as part of the recommendation from the planning commission that's part of what's in front of each of you is that we will put up cameras on the exterior of the building that will record, should there ever be a need for that. I've got that in Elm Avenue, and it made that available to law enforcement, even when they've got cars, they want to figure out, you know, who drove by or who didn't drive by at 3:00 AM. So we'll have the camera system up, and we'll have 24-hour staffing there.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillage, and then Vice Mayor Lucasberg.
Thank you, Mayor. So my biggest concern was in regards to the safety. With that being a community that is already plagued with crime, substance abuse, et cetera, I don't want to put the community in a predicament where there's even more hazards or more safety concerns.
Sure.
And so I'm glad that you, you know, you accepted the conditions as far as the cameras are concerned and the staff member. As far as the people that will be eligible for the program, are there any criminal backgrounds besides substance abuse that they would be, that they would possibly have, such as maybe sexual situations or things that would restrict them from living in other places?
Right. So I think criminal histories and substance abuse, unfortunately, as all know, go hand in hand. So do we have people in our program currently who may have some criminal history? Absolutely, we do. I'm very careful. My associate administrator, Mark Luck, here with me. Mark manages most of the veteran business coming in the front door, and we're very careful about what we allow in to our residential program. We don't want anybody coming into the residential program who's going to be violent, who's going to be significantly psychiatrically impaired while they're there, because we want everybody getting treatment. One of the requirements that we're setting for anybody that comes into the house at Prentice is that they have 45 days of clean and sober time. And I'm really not interested in bringing in people that we haven't worked with, because I want to make sure I know who they are. I'm not, you know, as a father and as a grandfather, I'm not willing to put people at risk. So I'm not going to have somebody with a sexual offense history that I would put in that house. I'm not going to have somebody with a significantly violent history that I'm going to put in that house, both for the liability for me as a business, but also just morally for me as a man, as a father, and as somebody who's entrusted with the community and the community's safety. If you grant something like that to me, I take that as really a holy responsibility. That's it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Lucasberg, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Webb, for the presentation. We know that Safe Harbor has done good work in this community since 2018. And just for the record, I want citizens watching and those who are present to know today that this is not a conflict for me. I have spoken with the city attorney. We just own this property. We lease it out. The Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services deemed that it was not a place where we could house multiple people in that facility. And so we couldn't use the facility. We found a good tenant who could use the facility. We don't stand to gain anything from your business operation with that, and so I am not in conflict, so I will be voting for this matter. I wish you continued success, because you are doing great things in this community. I know the persons that are in the other facilities. This would be a step down from them, so you get to spend time with these people that you already know, who would be moving into a sober house condition. So I wish you much success on this.
Thank you.
You have the floor, then. Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for the presentation. I was at Planning Commission and heard that dialogue. My understanding, to Councilman Tillage's question, all the residents in this halfway house are people who are basically graduating from the substance use disorder program that you run in the other location. True?
That's correct.
So you'll already have 45 days of engagement with everyone who eventually steps down to this halfway house?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. And to kind of pile on the need, as a vet, we are veteran, a heavy density of veterans in our community, and there isn't enough support available from military medicine, from VA. And so I appreciate the work that you all do in offering support to our veterans who unfortunately are suffering from a lot of substance abuse and mental health issues. So thanks.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. This is for our city attorney. Just curious, now that we're issuing use permits for organizations, can an organization limit who stays in there based on a city use permit?
That's a good question, and I don't know it off the top of my head. I can report back to you. That's a good question. I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I know it's an intricate issue.
Yeah.
If you would allow me to report back to you on that, I can do that, but I don't have the answer in this moment.
Can we vote on this, then? Because the applicant did put force in information that tended to suggest that there may be some limitations on who can reside on the premise. And I don't know if that's in the application or if that was just verbally communicated, but it was brought to the attention of council. And I just want to make sure we're on the right grounds with that.
That would be up to council, whether the deferral would be appropriate.
So on the, so would you suggest that we would move forward before you give us a legal assessment?
Because I'm not clear on the issue that exists, the answer, I would leave it up to council. It seems that if it may cause a problem with the legality of the actual granting of the use permit, it would seem prudent to wait. But I don't know if that's the answer. I don't know how it implicates this particular property and their need to move forward in whatever timeline they have. What I could do is, if I have two of my deputies here, we can look into that, maybe get you an answer, maybe just set it aside for now. We can still address it today and see if we can get an answer to your question today, this evening.
I'm fine. It just seems that it's different with someone that is privately allowing persons to stay in their home versus someone who is coming requesting a use permit from the city. It just seemed, I didn't know if there's a different standard there.
Let me just make sure my deputies understand the question and that we don't need any further information to get you an answer. You just give me a second. Look how quick they are. They are very quick. The initial response is that there are no conditions about occupancy in the use permit. So it seems it wouldn't apply in this situation. We can move forward, but for future references, we can report back.
And so it's not an issue that has been made, that council has been made aware of that in a public hearing?
I don't, could you, could you repeat the question?
I know it's not in the use permit application, but it was expressed publicly to council.
But there are no conditions with respect to that, so it's not an issue for this applicant. So what I could do is research it for other issues, you know, if it comes up again, but it is not relevant to this applicant.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to proceed?
Yes, sir, I'd like to proceed.
Are there any other questions? Did I get everybody? Are there any other questions from my colleagues on council? Well, if there are no other questions, sir, we thank you for your presentation.
Yes, sir.
And you can have a seat.
Thank you.
We do have a speaker for this public hearing item. The speaker is Mr. Armando Gomez. Mr. Gomez, if you would come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Armando Grundy Gomez. I come to you tonight as one of those veterans that has dealt with homelessness, dealt with somebody that deals with PTSD. So I want to come to you in a couple of things that's important to put in place. We glossed over, and I know some of your colleagues, Mr. Mayor, were talking about things like veterans dealing with mental health issues. That's not something to gloss over, folks. So the amount of veterans coming back or coming, not just in here, but throughout the nation, as long as we keep having these nice little things called wars or foreign entanglements, or however you want to put them, we're going to have more veterans coming back with issues. And more of them coming back with traumatic brain injuries, that's not something to gloss over. That doesn't make them violent. It means that they're struggling with something. It means that we need to take a serious look at that, because we don't have a serious view when it comes to dealing with mental health issues. The homeless is possibly a bigger part of the problem. Couple that with, you know, if they have issues of traumatic brain injuries, they're trying to have coping skills with it, be it alcohol, be it other things. Why do I know these things? I was that person. Now, I didn't struggle with substance. Thank goodness, you know, thank the Lord for that. But for me, what gives me pause when I see these nice little things and folks are coming saying, "I want to do a halfway house, but I don't want to deal with this part of it." Well, you have to take the good with the bad, right? And sometimes folks go through with things like Veterans Court. And I'm not coming to you as somebody like, "Oh, I think I know about it." No, I lived it, lived it. Luckily, I had a veteran housing facility that helped me get through, that helped me go on and graduate college, that helped me be able to go and get my master's, that helped me. But that was a blessing. What I want us to take a look at is to not gloss over the mental health aspects of it. So if somebody's saying, "We don't do this, but we're in a security, it's a security issue because it's in a neighborhood," we might need to take a more serious view of, maybe we need to put it where they have bigger facilities, whether that is in a planning area or planned area of your city that can handle even more folks so we can give them the help that they need. them the help that they need. I don't know what you have on your rolls or what property you own or leasing out. Maybe we need to do better than just a halfway house. To Mr. Mayor, to the vice mayor's point, she said they do good work and they have during 2020, we're also, I don't want to gloss over another fact that the Department of Veteran Affairs, at least under this administration, I want to be clear, is, has addressed the issue of veterans homelessness, has beaten the record, and has exceeded what their goal was, tremendously exceeded the goal. So they're not doing a small amount. Now, in the area of here, Portsmouth, Suffolk, and Hampton Rose region, different story possibly, but I do know that there is lots of things for veterans. There should not be a homeless veteran period in this country, number one. You have SFVF grants, you have HUD-VAS, you have many opportunities to be able to address these things, to not be homeless. So I want to be clear about that. I'm not speaking what I think, I'm speaking what I know and what are facts. So to Mr. Mayor, it's a credit to Councilman Tillage's question, not only about security, but the mental health issues. And everybody wants to be touchy-feely about it. We want to, you know, have the, you know, what, the apple pie hour mode when it comes to veterans coming here, but when it comes to addressing the real meat and potatoes of what I told you, these are not things that we want to talk about, the loving issues about traumatic brain injuries, but they're real things and we need to take that seriously. So I don't know what Safe Harbor or what the gentleman's going to do, but it is a serious thing that I think you all need to take into consideration about what we don't want. No, what we do want is getting people that need help off the street and getting them into a place. So we don't want them for this place or whatever place, it's always the NIMBY, but it's the non-sexy stuff that we don't want to talk about. So I credit the conversation up here, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a great, healthy one, but I want us to encourage to elevate this conversation and not just do the surface stuff, okay? Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing and you are not required to have signed up to come speak on this matter. If you wish to come forward and speak on this public hearing matter, state your name and address and you will have five minutes.
Hi, Dr. William Dodson, Mimosa Road, Portsmouth, Virginia. I don't think the issue here is about whether or not sober living houses do good. They do good. I think the issue here for most people is not in my neighborhood. They're afraid. I've been in sober living houses, not to live, but I have friends that own them, that run them. They're a very strict environment and people want to know, "Should it be next to my house?" Well, I'm going to stand here and say, "Put it next to my house. I'm welcome these homes. These are good things for our community. They do good things for people, they get good people out, they get them off the street. The people are screened. Please, please, please consider this," from a person who would take it in my neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this matter, you can come forward, you will have five minutes. State your name and address.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Manager, Members of Council. I am totally a hundred percent behind Mr. Webb. He's actually reached out when I was in the Londonos community and we had a great conversation about this. I'm glad he's opening or trying to open a sober living house because I understand that even when he, we spoke about it before, we're dealing with the peers and dealing with how people can transition. People need the opportunity to actually be inside situations. As such, me understanding that dealing with a lot of people who deal with the mental health, deal with addiction, and me, not with the military background, but you get people who come from incarceration, as I do, that need these type of situations to be able to adjust in society, be able to have a step down, because what we don't have is places for people who are actually coming out of apartment correction to actually be able to come and get settled and get theirselves stable too. So I'm a hundred percent in support of it. I thank Mr. Webb for even reaching out to me, becoming a part of the Londonos community and just reaching his hand out and being there for the community. So I'm a hundred percent in support of what he's trying to do.
Thank you, sir. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
I am Portsmouth, Clyde A. Tola, 1029 Blas Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. I live in Parkview. I'm a veteran of World War II, Korea, and Vietnam. This is great for someone to come into this city. I was a platoon commander. My officer, my platoon, won by twenty-four. Here I was a grandfather for all your brothers and little kids coming to me, little side and old, and then they come back home, because I had did a job on them in the service, you can believe that, Marine Corps, we didn't play. But when you came back home, there's a lot of kids come home and they are treated bad by civilians, because I've been treated bad too, by some civilians. But you could be speaking Russian, you could be speaking Chinese, or whatever. But that veteran once was a good man and he upheld you, this is why you're here today like you are right now, because of some veterans. Now he's in hard times, broke down and in trouble, you want to kick him and keep him there. Okay, give him a break. And if you do wrong, you got a jail cell down there, knock him out for a while. That's what we did, shaved your head, put you in the brig, see you with a big P on you, picking up sick wear bus the next day. But anyway, back this program, take this house, take them off the street. Have you noticed when you drive up and down the street, we had these stores, remember you see the guys out there? You don't see them with a pouring down rain, but you see them out the other day, it's cold. But you need a place to take these peoples when they come on and get them out. The VA don't give us everything. A lot of people think the VA give you this, they can give you that. Oh, no, don't believe that. Don't believe that at all. But I like to see, you know, we got this casino, I throw this in, I want that casino to pay my taxes and everything. When you become seventy years old, I want to see everybody in the city, don't pay no taxes no more, let that casino play it, okay? And look out for these veterans, because you might be speaking Chinese or Russian someday soon if you don't take care of one another. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing. You're not required to have signed up for this public hearing. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
William Britt, Sterling Point. How's everybody doing today?
Good.
The biggest thing is compassion, compassion for one another. PTSD is not just in military, it could be abused women, it could be sexually abused, it could be police department officers, anybody who needs any kind of help. This situation here, it's helping one another. And me personally, I'd rather see my tax money being spent on something like this than foolishly on other things. So once again, it comes down to compassion for one another.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this matter, you can come forward at this time, state your name and address, you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. We are in need, is there any further discussion from my colleagues on council? Madam City Attorney, you have the floor, ma'am.
I just wanted to follow back up on Dr. Whitaker's point on the notion of what was presented from the podium. Looking at the application, it does have a condition that the applicant is to comply with all laws and regulations, so any sort of discrimination would be in violation of the use permit, and so I think that is covering the issue that you presented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk? We need a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come, we have now come, we have now come to item B, Z-22-07. Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing ordinance we're considering for this item?
Yes, sir. West Craddock Ordinance granting the request of community housing partners to rezone the combined 2.4 acre at 2216 and 2220 Waldron Avenue from urban residential to multifamily urban residential in order to increase the maximum dwelling units per acre to eighteen. The applicant is concurrently requesting a use permit for a multifamily dwelling development, UP 22-22. The proposed development is an expansion of the neighboring Ansel Gardens Apartments. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for low to medium density single-family residential. The property is owned by Portsmouth Afton Square LP. Planning Commission recommends approval. And the ordinance reads zoning amendment ordinance Z-22-07.
Thank you, ma'am. Is the speaker present? Please, sir, identify yourself, name and address.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You will have ten minutes.
I'm a vice member, members of council. My name is Rob Beaman, I'm a local land use attorney, address 222 Central Park Avenue, Suite 2000, Virginia Beach, 23462. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, CHP, and joining me today is Mr. David Schultz, who is the Senior Vice President of Development and Construction for CHP. This application involves an existing apartment complex that's located in the Craddock portion of the city, just west of George Washington Highway, that was originally constructed in 1964. CHP is a 501(c)(3) based here in Virginia that has owned and managed this property for over twenty years now. CHP is known for the quality of its developments, but also for the sustainability of its design and has recently been recognized and received awards from groups such as the Virginia Energy Efficiency Council, Virginia Business Magazine, and the Affordable Housing Finance Magazine. CHP is also known for providing services and opportunities to its tenants that some other apartment complexes don't provide, including youth activities and programs, academic tutoring, and senior health and wellness instruction. Given the development's success and popularity, CHP proposes to invest further in this site by building two additional residential buildings that would have thirty-nine total additional units. The new buildings would be attractive and feature high-quality building materials, including brick and fiber cement, and would be designed to meet the EarthCraft Gold Certification Level and Department of Energy's Zero Energy Ready Home Requirements. Additionally, as is noted in the Planning Staff Report that the Planning Department prepared for this application, the application is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's goal of providing quality, modern housing for the citizens of Portsmouth. And then finally, I just wanted to note that this use is compatible with the surrounding land uses, which include multifamily to the north and to the east, and then single-family homes to the south. There will be generous buffering provided with the single-family homes to the south, including thirty-foot building setbacks, a row of evergreen trees, and also solid fencing. With that, we certainly thank you for your consideration of this application, we'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions from my colleagues on council? Seeing none, then, sir, you may have your seat. This is a public hearing item. If there's anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item, you can come forward at this time. You can come forward at this time. We do have a speaker, and that speaker is Mr. Armando Gomez. You defer to speak this time, sir? Once again, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come speak on this matter, you are welcome to come forward and speak. You will have five minutes. State your name and address. Seeing none, this item is closed. Is there any additional questions and comments from my colleagues on council? Then we're in need of a motion and a second.
Do the adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
I'm going to abstain on this due to a legal issue.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
We have now come to the second item, second part on that particular item, UP-22-22. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we're considering at this public hearing item?
Yes, sir. West Craddock Resolution granting the request of community housing partners for a use permit for a two-building, thirty-nine-unit multifamily dwelling development on the combined 2.4 acre property at 2216 and 2220 Waldron Avenue in the urban residential zoning district. The applicant is concurrently requesting a rezoning from UR to URM. The proposed development is an expansion of the neighboring Ansel Gardens Apartments. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for low to medium density single-family residential. The property is owned by Portsmouth Afton Square LP. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions. The resolution reads a resolution granting a use permit, UP 22-22, to Community Housing Partners Corporation to construct and operate a two-building multifamily dwelling development, having not to exceed thirty-nine total dwelling units at 2216 and 2220 Waldron Avenue.
Welcome back, sir. State your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Rob Beaman, local land use attorney, 222 Central Park Avenue, Suite 2000, Virginia Beach, 23462. My comments for the first application covered this one as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions from my colleagues on council? This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come and speak on this public hearing Mr. Gomez, you forego your speaking. Seeing none, this item is closed. We're in need of a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
I'm going to abstain for the same reason.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This, once again, is a public hearing item, item D, CA-23-01. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Yes, sir. City Ordinance granting the request of city council, the city of Portsmouth proposes to amend City Code, Chapter 40.2 zoning ordinance, including without limitation, Section 40.2 532i and Section 40.2 533i, to allow city council to elect to reconsider zoning map amendments and use permits that were previously denied prior to the end of the current one-year waiting period for re-filing denied applications. Planning Commission recommends approval. And the ordinance reads, "An ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 40.2 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, zoning ordinance by deleting Section 40.2-432i zoning text and zoning map amendments, effective denial, and Section 40.2-533i use permits, effective denial, for the purpose of eliminating the waiting period for filing a new application after denial."
Thank you, ma'am. How are you doing, ma'am? Good to see you. Are there any questions from my colleagues on council? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Chop, go ahead. Getting ahead of myself.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I am Julie Chop, Principal Planner with the Portsmouth Planning Department. This presentation will provide details on the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment that was proposed by council, as well as the process for rezoning and use permit applications if the amendment is adopted. Currently, the city's zoning ordinance requires a one-year waiting period before applications for the same or substantially the same use permit or rezoning request that are denied by city council can be resubmitted. Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2286 authorizes, but does not mandate, a one-year waiting period, or a waiting period not to exceed one year. On January 10th of this year, council adopted a resolution initiating staff to prepare an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow city council to elect to reconsider denied zoning map amendments, zoning text amendments, and use permit applications prior to the end of this one-year waiting period. At the February 7th Planning Commission public hearing, Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the proposed amendments by a vote of five to one. Planning Commission also approved a motion recommending that council consider additional modifications to this final amendment language. modifications to this final amendment language. At the February 28th City Council Work Session, a briefing was held to go over the Planning Commission recommendations. After a lengthy discussion, council's consensus was to eliminate the one-year waiting period, which would allow rezoning and use permit applicants to reapply at any time. Removing the one-year waiting period essentially eliminates the need for an application to be reconsidered, thus negating the need for the originally proposed amendment language. This slide shows the removal of the code language requiring the 12-month waiting period from the zoning ordinance section on rezonings. This slide shows the removal of the language in the use permit section of the zoning ordinance. At the February 28th Work Session, city council expressed a desire to have the option to hold a second reading on applications that are denied on the first reading. The current language within the rezoning and use permit sections of the zoning ordinance already provides city council the option to hold a second reading for denied applications. If council adopts the proposed amendment to remove the one-year waiting period, the application process will work as follows. First, an applicant applies for a rezoning or use permit. Then, Planning Commission conducts a public hearing and makes a recommendation to approve or deny the application. The following month, city council conducts a public hearing. If council votes to approve the application, the approval is final and no other action is needed. If council votes to deny the application, council will then vote during that meeting whether to bring the application back for a second reading at a future meeting. If council decides not to hold a second reading, the denial is final and the applicant can reapply at any time. If city council elects to hold a second reading and approves the application on second reading, the approval is final. If city council elects to hold a second reading and denies the application at the second reading, the denial is final and the applicant can reapply at any time. Should this proposed amendment be adopted, anytime an application is denied, the applicant can file a new application for the same use or zoning classification without waiting a year. This provides the applicant the opportunity to revise an application to address council concerns and file a revised application without any waiting period. This concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for any questions from council.
Thank you, Ms. Chop. Dr. Whitaker, shall you have the floor?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chop. The question I have is regarding, once it goes to that second reaplication, does that applicant have to go back through the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, once, if they reapply, then they would go back to the beginning of the flow chart.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from my colleagues on council? Thank you, Ms. Chop. Very well done, ma'am. This is a public hearing. If you wish to come speak on this public hearing matter, you can come forward and speak on it. We do have a speaker for this particular item. It's Mr. Armando Gomez. Any other speakers for this item? If you wish to speak on it, come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Seeing none, this item is closed. We're in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Barnes is not present. Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mrs. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to the, the part of our agenda of City Manager's Report, Item 23-89. And madam clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item?
23-89A, Adoption of a Resolution Declaring the Innovation Overlay District Established Pursuant to Section 40.2-208D of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, to be revitalization area within the meaning of Section 36-55.30:2.8 of the Code of Virginia.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We do have a registered speaker for this item. Moving forward, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is the speaker speaking?
He said he didn't want to speak.
It's, it's two speakers.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that one. Ms. Biggs, Donna Biggs. I'm sorry, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I'll make myself known.
Yes, ma'am, and we certainly appreciate that. If you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Lee Biggs, and I live on Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Agenda item 23-89A is a resolution declaring that the innovative overlay district established by the Code of the City and Commonwealth of Virginia to be a revitalization area as reported by the Director of Economic Development to obtain low-income housing tax credit financing. The Virginia Housing Development Authority awards extra points to applications for development that are located within a revitalization area. The report goes on to say that the establishment of a revitalization area requires a finding that the economic development of the area will benefit the city, but the current zoning area of County Street, High Street, and London Boulevard corridors between Eppingham Street and the MLK Freeway currently lacks the housing needed to support development, and the city needs the Virginia Housing Development Authority to provide decent, safe, and sanitary affordable and mixed-income housing. By declaring the Innovation Overlay District to be a revitalization area, city council can increase the available finances from sources other than the city for the development of affordable and mixed-income housing in the area. On the third Tuesday, September 20th, 2022, there was a closed session at the Economic Development Authority meeting. I gave feedback to the Director of the Economic Development Department regarding the study to create an innovative district down High Street. I reported that the innovative district was all about the $19.3 million to address the closed meeting to amend and restate the entertainment district zoning application, traffic, infrastructure agreement between the Economic Development Authority and the Rivers Portsmouth Gaming LLC. I did not get a response from the Director to clarify what I wrote regarding the closed meeting, which included a lot of stuff, and I'm not going to go through a reading it. You can read my report. This agenda item is to revitalize area to obtain low-income housing tax credits. How many low-income housing tax credits are in Portsmouth already? What is the limit to overcome our city with developers not paying real estate taxes? We, the people, just got information from the city's Census Office about increasing the value of private property to pay for the public property. When is this city's elected and appointed going to stop spending our money without our knowledge and consent? And by the way, there's a hearing about this at the, um, Social Service on the 21st, talking about this, uh, entertainment district. But, of course, y'all are going to vote for it anyway, so that we don't have to hear anything. Y'all make the decisions without our knowledge and consent.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, um, I do have a question. It's probably better suited for, um, Mr. Donahue. I believe he submitted the report.
Mr. Donahue, Director of Economic Development, are you in the building, sir? If you would come forward, please.
Yeah, Mr. Donahue, I have a question. In regards to a revitalization area, what determines whether an area is going to be designated as a revitalization area?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Dr. Whitaker, to your question, there are state code provisions for establishing a revitalization area. I believe that was included in the, uh, package that was distributed for your review. There's certain standards as it relates to, uh, the condition of property and a locality's desire for that area to have reinvestment.
Right. So, so the question is, what, how, how do you determine which properties fit within revitalization?
Okay. I misunderstood your question. The, uh, district that is being, um, requested, as far as the revitalization area, is consistent with the existing innovation district boundaries, which have been previously established by the city council. So, this request is to essentially take that same district, those boundaries, and designate them as a revitalization area as well.
Right.
So, that, that area is already established.
Well, this request is being driven by the developer. The developer is, um, pursuing some tax credits through the, um, VHDA, and is requesting that this be considered a revitalization area. So, the question becomes, is that city-driven or developer-driven? Because had the developer not requested it, that property would not have been designated as a revitalization area.
Um, you are correct. Councilman, the request came through a, a developer of a, um, affordable housing project that is located within the innovation district, and hence the reason for the request for the revitalization area, um, which is consistent with what our goal as a, um, locality is with respect to the innovation district. The two kind of go hand in hand. Um, so, the revitalization area designation will support the innovation district and the intent, uh, for incentivizing and seeking, um, investment in, uh, the innovation district.
Right. My concern, my concern is that since it's developer-driven, what's going to determine which developer is able to successfully have a property designated as a revitalization area? It seems to be that if there's, um, no type of measurement there, or criteria, that it starts becoming arbitrary.
Um, the, the area itself, the revitalization area, uh, that would be established would allow for any developer to, um, submit an application, for instance, in this case, for low-income housing tax credit, uh, financing, um, to also take advantage of the designation. So, it wouldn't be, uh, necessarily restrictive in that sense. Uh, there could be other projects that could take advantage of this as well. Um, I wouldn't limit that to, uh, the low-income housing tax credit program. There's other grant programs, uh, that exist where this designation will assist as well. Um, some of those are through the Department of Housing and Community Development. So, this would, um, open the door for, um, other projects, um, to obtain financing assistance, um, not specifically, uh, just low-income housing tax credits.
So, so any developer that would request that their particular property be deemed a revitalization area would be able to, uh, have that designation given?
Uh, what this would allow for would be for, um, any project that would fall within the boundaries of the revitalization area, um, they could qualify based on those state provisions.
But, but you're extending the revitalization area based on a developer's request. What, what I'm asking is, what if a developer who is not in a revitalization area, just like this developer isn't, we're doing it because of the request? What if a developer wants that revitalization designation on a property that is not in the present revitalization area? How do we make that determination? And that's why I'm saying it appears arbitrary.
Uh, there would need to be a, a separate request to establish another revitalization area within the city, or to expand the existing boundaries, I think, in that scenario. Um, I think what is unique about this case is we have an innovation district that has been established, uh, that we're looking to incentivize, uh, revitalization or redevelopment within. Um, this revitalization area designation kind of goes hand in hand with what already exists.
Right. But we already have areas around the city that are designated as revitalization areas.
Uh, to my knowledge, uh, not exist, not existing. This would be, um, I believe, the, the first revitalization area, uh, that would have been designated.
So, on the, on, on the future use maps where it designates, uh, areas for revitalization, that's a, that's a different designation.
Um, I'm not aware of any, um, existing areas that city council has designated that exist currently.
Okay. So, that can be driven by developers?
Um, or the city, if it, if it so chooses.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions, uh, from members of council? And it looks like we don't have any other speakers, so we are in need of, we are in need, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Of adoption.
Second.
We already had the motion and second. I'm sorry, okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please? Who's the second speaker? Excuse me? Did you want to speak on this item? Okay. You, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, Armando Grundy Gomez. Uh, one question I had for you, um, in hearing, Dr. Whitaker's a lot of question. I guess, for a revitalization area, so if, if a developer's having to apply for them, I guess my question would come back as a more efficient way, does the city of Portsmouth have in place a community redevelopment agency or a CRA portfolio where you could, instead of any developer, you would have an area that you designate for redevelopment where folks could not have to apply, but they're in a specific area you deem a part of the city for revitalization in and of itself? You also get federal dollars. It's a federal extension arm. Um, is that something that the city of Portsmouth has, Mr. Mayor, um, in place? And I know we're not supposed to have a back and forth, but the CRA would do a lot. I'll pause.
Hold on, sir. We'll, we'll get into that question. Madam City Attorney, can you, can you, uh, address this concern, please?
Could you repeat your question, please?
So, my, my question is, uh, as an extension of not just one of the councilmen's questions, but you're talking about developers having to apply for stuff for revitalization. If it's in an area or not in an area, they just have to, it's kind of like playing bingo. You just apply for it, and we may get it, you may not get it. My question is, is much more germane to, instead of having somebody to apply, does the city have a federal arm known as a CRA, a Community Redevelopment Agency, where you have an area that's tacked in that you, as council, would designate an area of growth and opportunity for revitalization and economic development? It's a, either you do or you don't.
I'm gonna, I, I, thank you for that. Thank you for clarifying that. I'm gonna toss that over to the city manager. That is a city manager question.
There we go.
Uh, I don't see a legal issue presented in that.
Madam Manager?
I want to say no. I know we have community development authorities, but for community re- revitalization authority, no.
Okay. So, might I suggest, Mr. Mayor, um, just to help, so it, there's reasons why you have a CRA. A CRA, which I'm sure you have, which, I think sometime last year, you talked about 44% of your property is off the, um, off the tax rolls. The reason why you would want to have a CRA, a Community Redevelopment, as you look into it, it's, it's been around for years, is that you would develop a section or many sections of an area to eliminate urban blight and decay, that you could, not necessarily, it's our, we're the people's money, but you, you have a central point of area where you want to revitalize, where federal monies come in, state monies come in, and it's not just their tax money, it's everybody lumped in, and it's also, anybody can take part of it, regardless how you look, where you come from, everybody can be a part of it, and it is to eliminate urban blight and decay. And I sit down with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have, is there, is there additional discussion? Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
This is, this is for the city manager. Just curious, what is the economic benefit to the city for, uh, areas being designated as revitalization areas?
This, this isn't a public hearing, sir.
Oh, I have had a, I have had a, but, no, but this isn't a public hearing.
Thank you, sir. He was a registered speaker.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, so, I just gotta get back to my turn. So, okay, for this particular case or any other case, as businesses come and as we continue to attract businesses, it gives them the ability to receive credits that would help them with their process. I think we even look at, how we look at CDBG, Community Development Block Grants, to be able to entice people to come and to create and start new businesses within our city. It's just an ability to attract businesses or developers to come within our city and to build and receive the credits that would help them, especially when you're dealing with inflation and, and they may have started a, a, a site plan or a plan a year ago and then a year later, they, they are dealing with supply and demand. And this kind of helps offset some of that expense that they have in developing new projects. So I hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to add some information. As a member on the Stop, liaison to the Stop, Inc. board, we talk about CDCs and of course, they are one who assisted with this project. And of course, this project built the former, the, the current Holly Point. And of course, affordable housing is needed in our community. But speaking to the revitalization is usually designated as an area that is either blighted, deteriorated, deteriorating, or if not rehabilitated, likely to deteriorate by reason of the buildings. And if you look at that area where that was, it was the former, I believe, Evans Electric Place. And if you look at some of the other buildings down there that have been inoperable, unoccupied for greater 30-plus years, I see this as a good option for our city and offering the option to have this developer to use a revitalization area in the Innovation District, provides them additional opportunities to qualify for the credits that they would need to, to, to move their application. And if we're not good stewards of developers who we want to bring affordable housing, of course, Holly Point was filled, was filled before it was finished, and we need another one. And whatever we as a city can do to aid in this developer, I think we should move forward with it. If that's adding a revitalization district to the Innovation District, gives them extra points or credits or whatever is needed to approve their application, I think we need to do that. And then on another hand, I guess the self, self-funding was also requested by this developer. So at some point, if we can bring that back for a report back on how we move forward with also assisting in that manner, I would like to have some discussion on that, if there's no objection from council.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my colleague just outlined it perfectly. Holly, Holly Point was built on Effingham on a piece of property that sat vacant for 24 years. So to their credit, they built, I think it was $11 million plus project at Holly Point. And I think the current project that's being proposed is going to be a $14 million plus project. In addition to that, the developer is going to designate 15 units for the homeless. So that's a, you know, given our homeless situation in our city, I think that's a, that's a wonderful combination of not only investing in our city, but also invest in, in human capital and creating 15 apartments for the homeless. So as my colleague said, the request is for some soft funding, but they are also on the clock. I think they have to have a, an answer, I think, by the end of this week. And I would say that the funding is over a three-year period, doesn't, doesn't mean that we have to come up with the, with the funds this year. It can be spread over three years. But this is a project that this council needs to approve. It, it speaks to everything that each of us has spoke to at different times. That's the need to do something with the, about the homeless in our city and also bring development to the city, to put it on the tax rolls. So that's a, that's a win-win situation that we should not let slip through our fingers.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
I, I just wanted to, before we take the vote, because we have the motion and second, I do want to clarify, there are two parts to this, Part A and Part B. Neither of these parts include any soft funding in them. So I just want to make that clear. What we're asking for is a resolution declaring the Innovation Overlay District be established with the revitalization area, that's Item A. So that's what's on the table right now. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item B, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the item resolution we are considering at this time?
Yes, sir. Adoption of a resolution affirming that the Baines Point development is located in a revitalization area within the meaning of Section 36-55.30:2.8 of the Code of Virginia.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a registered speaker for this particular item, Mr. Armando Gómez. Thank you, sir. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to Item 23-90, and we need a motion on this particular item. So if I could ask, if I could call for a motion?
With adoption?
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? And Ms., Madam Clerk, would you please read the item? I'm sorry, would you please read the item?
Yes, sir. Adoption of a motion to retire and permit police officer Nicole Hill to adopt a Portsmouth Police Department horse named Moose.
And we have a motion and a second. And I'd just like to make a statement. I, I had the pleasure of knowing Moose, our police horse, and, and, and having an opportunity to introduce my grandchildren and take pictures with Moose. I'm really gonna miss Moose, but I'm glad that Moose is gonna be going to a, to a happy home. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please? We have a motion and a second?
Yeah, we do.
Armando, you said, he said he didn't want to speak, he raised his hand. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We now come to new business, Item 23-91, Boards and Commissions. And, Mr. Moody, do we have any boards or commissions to add this?
No, we don't, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 23-92, Items Submitted by Councilmembers. Are there any items to submit by my councilmembers? Vice Mayor Lucas Burke?
Yes, if it is the consensus of council, I would like to have a, a report back or a discussion on the soft funds for Baines Point Development.
Okay. Are, are we in agreement in terms of a report back on that? Can I see a show of hands by council? Yes?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. So Baines Point, in addition to the request for the revitalization district in the Innovation Overlay, was requesting soft funds that helps to approve with the application as well. We just want to know what is available out there, if it is in fact an option. If it's not, then, then we'll need to know that as well. I do know that our U.S. Senators, Tim, Tim Kaine and Mark Warner, both approved $98 million of funding to Virginia, where Portsmouth received a little over $2 million of that funding. Of course, we don't have it yet, I don't know when it's going to arrive, but just want to know how that would be allocated towards affordable housing, which is what our U.S. Senators designated to assist with areas like Portsmouth to aid in the increase of affordable housing in those communities.
Thank you, ma'am. Also, are there any other items to be submitted by council? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the, the leadership at Gosport, Wilson Ward Civic League for organizing this coming Saturday's cleanup along Portsmouth Boulevard. We expect to have active-duty sailors from Norfolk Shipyard, from the ships at the Navy Yard, from the Naval Hospital, and also our Coast Guard sailors participating in the cleanup. And, and obviously, more hands make the work easier. So if you'd like to join the effort on Saturday morning, 8 o'clock until noon, you can contact the Gosport, Wilson Ward Civic League and get the details. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments from my colleagues? Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, Mayor, thanks. Earlier, when we were appointing an interim assessor, we kind of glossed over Janie Culpepper. And I think saying that she doesn't have a degree is a disservice to her. She served, and I think it's important for the citizens who don't know her background with this city and also her abilities as an assessor, to hear, hear them. And I'm not, they're very lengthy, and I'm not gonna read them all. But I think it's important to note, she, she worked in the assessor's office for 30 years. She served six years as our assessor, and, and she only left because of, her husband was ill with cancer at that time. She was also awarded a very prestigious, her department, under her leadership, was awarded Award of Excellence by the International Association of Assessing Officers. And, and that award is, very few people in the United States, assessor offices ever received that award. So she, she, she comes back in an interim basis and she knows what an assessor's office needs to do and also knows how to properly assess properties in the city, because she's done it for a number of years. So she can build a team, she's done it before, and I'm very confident she'll do it again. I just wanted to set the record straight on who this interim is for those of you who are not familiar with Janie Culpepper. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and then Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, ma'am.
Okay. Happy Women's History Month. How women claim their place in American history. Observed throughout the United States in the 1980s, Women's History Month was born out of a feminist path for equal access to jobs and education. One of the main demands of this strike for equality march that was filled the New York City streets to capacity was held on August 26, 1970, one day before my seventh birthday. So I've always been advocating for women since then. Women have always been a part of history, but for centuries, their participation in it was overlooked. Early history texts often excluded women altogether, aside from the accounts of powerful women like queens, historians, who were almost entirely men, often saw the past through the lens of the Great Man Theory, which holds that history is largely shaped by male heroes and their struggles. And I'll stop there, and I applaud women who have been noted in history. Right now, we have all of our appointees, our city attorney, our city manager, our city clerk, and now our city assessor are all women. And I'd also like to note that the first woman elected to Congress in Virginia for the fourth district, Jennifer McClellan, is representing Virginia. And also, the first woman to serve as the President Pro Tempore of the Virginia Senate, L. Louise Lucas, is serving in our city as well.
Mr. Mayor, just want to say that the comment that Councilman Moody made in regards to the degree, that was not a disservice, that, that was a fact. And the, there was a public outcry when there was a previous city appointee that did not have a college degree, which received quite a bit of attention. So that was just trying to point out there was a criteria, and the criteria was not met. And so that was not trying to impugn or to attack anyone's character as far as being a disservice. I was just stating a fact.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Only comment to that would be, experience does equate to college education and most hiring processes. And I know a lot of people with degrees that, for, for whatever reason, aren't successful. And that's just a human element.
Yeah, I agree.
And I also know people without degrees that reach wonderful achievements in their careers. And Ms. Culpepper has been one of those people.
Yeah, I agree with this, it's just I come out of a tradition where when that goalpost moved like that, it tends to not benefit us.
Thank you, sirs. Madam City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In line with what our vice mayor was speaking of for women's history, I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to one of the attorneys in my office. When I was a, a young girl growing up in Portsmouth, Virginia, there weren't very many examples of African-American women lawyers to look up to. But I was fortunate to run into the courthouse and run into Sheila Riddick, who is a city attorney in my office. She was the first African-American attorney in the city attorney's office. Her, she was hired on the first week of January in 1986, and she is going to kill me for making this statement publicly. Nevertheless, I think it is important to note that our women's history is right here in our city. As the first African-American woman city attorney, I am honored to serve with her in my office, and we intend to honor her further on in this month, so I wanted everyone to know that.
Absolutely, Vice Mayor.
Speaking of first, our city clerk, I believe, was the first woman to serve as city clerk in the whole history of the city as well, so we applaud her.
Absolutely.
And I think she's in the audience, isn't she? Stand up, Ms., Ms., Ms. White.
Ms. Deborah White.
Ms. Deborah White?
First woman to be elected as.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Thank you, and, and thank you all.
And the one who's serving as well.
Outstanding, outstanding. So I did want to add that on Saturday night in the city of Portsmouth, city attorney Levonda Graham Williams, interim city manager Mimi Terry, Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke, Councilman Vernon Tillage, joined me and so many other folks at the Mayor's Mass Ball in the city of Portsmouth. And it was sponsored by the United Negro College Fund, whose motto is, "A mind is a terrible thing to waste, but a very important thing to invest in." How important was that and how special was that in the city of Portsmouth? Well, it was the first time that it was held, and by the way, there were over 600 individuals, businesses, that were, that were in attendance, and we recognized Portsmouth businesses and leaders within our community. In addition to that, which is one of the most important things, we raised over $350,000 to support the education of those individuals. And so I'm, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take a moment to just under, let you understand. How many of you in this audience attended an HBCU? Please raise your hand. So there you go. It does work, and we're just proud that Portsmouth had a night to shine. And I can tell you, the Renaissance was lit up, and everybody said, wow, Portsmouth is doing wonderful things. So on behalf of my colleagues up here and the citizens of Portsmouth and the region and UNCF, we thank you, we thank you, we thank you. Are there any other items to be submitted by council? Seeing none, then, do we have a report on pending items, ma'am? Okay, we don't have one at this time. We have now come to the item of non-agenda speakers, Item 23-94. And Madam Clerk, would you? And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body, rather than to any particular member of the city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first speaker for the evening is Ms. Althea Meese. Ms. Meese, ma'am, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
Althea Meese, Office of the Public Defender, One Guardian Court. For those of you who know me, I have spent most of the days of my legal career in the courtrooms of the city of Portsmouth, both in the old courthouse and in the one we occupy now. I've seen a lot of criminal cases in that time. If any of you have seen a criminal prosecution for yourself, you know that in our criminal courts, lawyers are necessities and not luxuries. Those important words come from an important Supreme Court case, Gideon v. Wainwright. This week, we mark the 60th anniversary of that landmark decision, which enshrined a constitutional right to counsel for the indigent in criminal cases. A fundamental constitutional right, essential to a fair trial, regardless of one's ability to pay. It's the reason that public defenders exist. It's the reason that I found my calling to serve the city of Portsmouth for 15 years. And we at the Public Defender's Office wanted to mark this important occasion. We wanted to have an event that could bring the city together. We wanted to help serve even more our most vulnerable citizens, and give something back, and allow the community to come together and give something back, too. Portsmouth is a special place where people care about each other and lift each other up. And we would like to invite the citizens of Portsmouth and city council to our Gideon Day celebration at the Portsmouth Public Defender's Office this Saturday. We're calling it a block party, because we are your neighbors. There will be food, there will be music, there will be activities and fun for the kids. There will be lots of resources and community partners bringing information out to those who need it the most. We're holding a bake sale. For some reason, a lot of the people who work for me are really good bakers. We're going to raise funds for Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless, because they're about to build a shelter, which is so desperately needed in this city. We're also going to have a raffle. People bring canned goods, we're going to give those to the food bank and give them a raffle ticket, try and do some door prizes. I'm hoping it'll be a great time, and I'm hoping as many of the citizens can attend as are interested in that and joining us and celebrating with us. It's all happening this Saturday, March 18, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We're going to have welcome remarks at 1:00 p.m., but you can come anytime. We don't have parking available. People should park in the garage if they want to, Allen County Street. If it rains, we're going to have to reschedule, because we do not have a tent big enough for this. Please check our Facebook page and Twitter if you need information on that. I also brought flyers for everybody, if you would like them, and I'd be glad to take any questions.
When you get a chance, can you please give the flyers to the sergeant-at-arms, so he can get them to us?
Yes, sir.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Ms. Meese? Well, I don't have a question, but I have met with you on a number of occasions, and I can honestly say, I am grateful that you do the job that you do. And I thank you for your service, ma'am, and for the service of your team to those vulnerable citizens who need to have appropriate legal counsel.
Thank you, sir. And truly, I couldn't imagine doing anything else, and I couldn't imagine doing it anywhere else. So I'm thrilled that we can put this event on. Everybody in my office is working together, and we're so excited. We hope it'll be a great day. Thank you.
See you on Saturday. Bye-bye. Our next speaker is Mr. William Britt. Mr. Britt, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
William Britt, Sterling Point. I hear all these, I didn't find anything about the, this morning, about the tax assessment being terminated on the news. But we have all these accolades pertaining to the new city assessor and all that. We've had the highest tax, real estate tax rate for the last 20 years versus all the rest of the seven cities, which is horrible. I got my tax, real estate taxes for 2022, 21 to 2022. One of our properties went up $10,940. From '22 to '23, it went up, same property, $22,760, total of $33,700. I got another one of my pieces of property from 2021, '22, went up $24,800. From '22 to '23, went up $28,140, total of $52,940. And another one of our properties basically went up to about $30,000. So in the last two years, my property's gone up over $130,000. All right? So I can't give any accolades to anybody in that department, because bottom line is, we have a problem in the city. The city is, you know, I've been in the city council meetings, listened to all this. Every development that we've had in the city was pertaining to apartments, apartments or homes. What are we doing to recruit businesses, corporations, that are going to go over and sustain the tax basin in this city? We are relying on the citizens who own houses, which is a veteran community. We have no industry, none, other than, let's take the casino out of the equation. Our biggest industry in here is the shipyard, which is not paying taxes. Then you got the military, which isn't paying taxes. All right? So we have a major problem in the city. We need to start doing development on recruiting businesses, not more apartments, not any of this stuff here, because more apartments come along with retention of water and development of, more stuff to develop this stuff. You know, traffic and all that. We're still short 80 police officers. We are still rated the most dangerous city in Virginia. These are our accolades. High taxes, crime, and once again, you might whack me on this one here, the worst school system. These are our accolates. What are we going to do about correcting these problems? We got problems. Let's get industry in here, let's get business in here. Let's cut down these taxes. You look at all the rest of the seven cities, it's an inflated real estate market. You would know that, you're in real estate. What is Portsmouth doing to do anything about that? The other seven cities are cutting the tax rate. All right? We have not even brought that up for vote. I mean, here we are, you know, I talked to many of you people, and I get this thing, we have not raised the tax rates. No, we didn't. We rose the values of our homes and our businesses, which hence rose the taxes. What is the city going to do, like the other seven cities, about cutting taxes to help relieve people? I mean, it's over $100 and some thousand in the last two years that I have to pay more taxes on. I mean, this is utterly ridiculous. So I think this is something that you guys need to chew on, and, you know, do something about it. And my concerns, when you guys were talking about this other thing, is regentrification. I really have concern about that revitalization of specific areas. Who determines that? A contractor goes over and says, "Okay, well, I can pick up these properties cheap," and then go ahead and declare that? I mean, I got a property right in the middle of Robinman Avenue, my business. So what is that? I mean, what are we talking there? We're going to go over and say, "Let's revitalize that area and try to take the properties cheap?" You know, I got a concern about that, I really do have a concern about that. And like I said, we need to bring industry in this area, not just residential. We need to bring stuff that's going to sustain the tax basin, not the people. Because I'm not the only one getting butchered around here. And there's several people that live in my neighborhood in here, and they're pissed. Mr. Hugo lives in my neighborhood, and I'm pretty sure he got his tax increase. You know, this is terrible. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Tony Goodwin. Mr. Goodwin, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members, city attorney, city manager. My name is Tony Goodwin, and I reside in the neighborhood of Parkview. My topic tonight was items submitted by council members. My memory may be a little blurry sometimes, but I think it's back into about 2008, 2009, when this line item was put onto the agendas. Mr. Moody, I believe you might be able to confirm that. And it seems to be, as an observer of patterns, an observer of people, it seems like that one line item on this agenda becomes the most contentious line item that we have on these agendas. It also becomes with great announcements as well. But I think what's more important is that the items that are put on the agenda at the last moment conflict with what I believe is probably the lack of public notices to the citizens that want to have a chance to come up and speak. This is the 2019 Guide of the Virginia Press Association that says, "Why do we need public notices? Citizens must have access to information concerning government activities and civil proceedings." Some of the items that basically they highlight is obviously mandatory announcements that are made in newspaper or articles, authority to require removal, repair, et cetera, buildings and other structures. It's mandatory one-week notice to the public. Adoption of ordinances, resolutions, general amending and repealing ordinances, which I think happened at the last city council meeting under items submitted by council. One week or two weeks, successive weeks of notice mandatory. Appointment of deputies and employment of employees, discriminatory practices in certain officers, civil penalty. Notification once, not mandatory, but other options are available. Notice when public hearings are required, mandatory. And that's just the list that they've obviously offered. What I'm going to suggest is basically adopt or consider to procedure a manual similar to our neighboring cities. City of Chesapeake, they, of course, move their non-agenda speakers at the top of the docket or top of the agenda, and of course, it's limited to 30 minutes only. So that means if you have a three-minute speaker, it's obviously 10 speakers or six otherwise at five minutes. But nowhere in there do they have an item that has a place for non-submitted by council members. Same thing goes for Norfolk. These items, I think that if, not necessarily taking them out of this agenda and doing away with them altogether, but it would be more germane to actually have that item put into your public work session prior to the following city council meeting, at least a week in advance or two weeks in advance. So things like giving out information or taking action on something doesn't allow for the opportunity for the public to even learn what you're talking about, or even have a chance to speak about it. And so, with that said, I'm going to basically yield my time, but I would love to have a conversation with the city manager or city attorney about these types of practices, and if this is something that's a good idea or not. I do have, you know, obviously, something that we discussed, or I've been trying to discuss about back on the 24th of January, that it was an item that was submitted by council member, that it was a direct relation to something that we needed to discuss, and I have not had that opportunity to make that happen. So at this time, though, I would obviously yield my time and ask if I could have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Steve Carroll. Mr. Carroll, if you'd come forward and state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Steve Carroll. My address is already a matter of record.
Good evening, sir.
I'm here about my real estate assessment. I've lived here all my life, 67 years. And the house that I live in was my grandparents' house that I bought when they passed away. At the time, it was Norfolk County. Then it became Chesapeake. What have I got for the taxes I pay today? Sprawl, crime. We've had, what, 12 or 13 murders already this year in Portsmouth? The highest taxes in nearly the entire state of Virginia. My assessment went up $34,000 this year. Over the last three years, it's gone up 21%. And you go back and look at my real estate assessment history, it looks like a roller coaster. Now, I have not watched the news. I was unable to attend the work session, because I've had to re-enter the workforce after retiring of 45 years. And now it's a good thing I do, because I've got to pay my tax bill. There's no sense in this. I understand that the former assessor was fired. I'm not sure that that's going to solve the problem. Because we went through this in 2005. City council reaped ungodly amounts of tax windfall money and did nothing to balance it out. And where's the money? In 1968, Portsmouth sued and got Chesapeake to cede the entire Churchland area to solve Portsmouth's limited tax base and tax problems. And what have we got for it? Sprawl, crime, drugs, gangs. I have a home in Portsmouth that I was proud of. I was raised in Portsmouth. My three daughters were raised in Portsmouth. I no longer have a home in Portsmouth. I have a house. A house I can walk away from. A house I can replace. And to be foretold is to be forewarned. And if you think that me standing at this podium makes me singularly exclusive to that mindset, think again. Our real estate assessment process is broken, just like our 911 system is broken. Now, I was unaware that the former assessor was hired. I think it's a great idea. I know that person individually. That lady has immense character. And I think she'll be a fine choice as an interim assessor. I think that she will make the best of a bad situation, but I must repeat, when I look at my real estate assessments, and they go up and down, up and down, up and down, there is no rhyme and reason. My land alone went up $11,000 this year. If one could make an argument that a home has increased in value in a depressed market that we have today with high interest rates, you can't make it for the land. The system is broken, and you need to fix the system. Hiring new assessors is not going to solve that. But I'm going to say it again. To be foretold is forewarned. You're going to see a stream of people leave this city like you have never seen if you don't fix this problem, and you fix it fast. Mark my words. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Deanna Powers. Deanna Powers, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
My name is Deanna Powers, and I am a resident here in Portsmouth. I love my city. This is the first council meeting I've ever been to. I just want to just put it out there and hope that you guys can vote on the area where I live in, Churchland, we have a problem with the 18-wheeler truck drivers. They come out there and they block everything, take up all the parking spaces. It leaves a blind spot for a new driver like me. I wait until I get in my 50s to get my driver's license, so I'm always, you know, a little nervous. But it's also a fear for the children. I'm a mother, and I'm a grandmother. And, you know, to see these kids out there, standing 6:00, 6:30 in the morning, waiting for the bus, and they can't see the for the bus, and they can't see the bus coming, there's blind spots, we already have human trafficking and things like that happening in the world. So I'm here tonight because I just want to be part of the solution and bring this to your attention. Please come to, you know, my area, look at it, assess it, and see, and see what you can do about these truck drivers, because it's not fair. I'm a woman, I don't want to have to walk out there and get snatched or something happened to me. Thank you.
Ms. Powers, if you would remain after the meeting so we can get some information from you, is that okay?
Yes.
So we can get some information from you, the manager, or someone on our team?
Absolutely.
Will get information from you so that we can address your concerns.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. William Dotson.
Thank you, Dr. William Dotson, Mimosa Road, Portsmouth, Virginia. I think for the first time, I'm astounded that I agreed with two of the council members who I almost have completely disagreed with in the past. I heard some words from Mr. Whitaker talking about measurement and criteria, and I was like, I need to hear more of that. At the last meeting, I was approached and told, well, some of that's coming. And I feel like it's platitudes, it's not really, you're not really serious. We can't go out there, let me go back. I was approached by the Chief of Police this week and said, "We need more social, positive social media. We've had enough of the negative stuff online. We need more positive stuff." Well, we as people can't give you that unless you give us something back to work with. In order to do that, we need to know numbers. We need to know what the crime rates are. We need to know what the 911 response is. We need numbers on economic development. We need to measure things, and things aren't being measured right now. There might be behind-the-scenes that you're getting, we're not getting any of that, which is the second problem, is that the communication with the citizens, the visibility for us to see it, requires us to dive in there and dig and beg for information. We need that information in order to get positive information out to the citizens, and I don't feel like that's coming to us. I'd like to see more positive information reflected on in Virginia. But to do that, we need to measure it and we need to have it given to us so that we can reflect upon it, so that we can use it, so that we can talk about Portsmouth as the place we'd like for it to be, a place to have homes, a place to live. Measurement, 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 communication and transparency out to the citizens. Please, no more platitudes. Let's hear from you what you're doing about measuring things. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Biggs. Ms. Biggs, if you'd come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes, ma'am.
My name is Donna Lee Biggs. I live at 3104 Garland Drive in Woodbine Farms neighborhood. The real estate reassessment annual report that I received has all the neighborhoods listed, but did not have the voting precincts for the neighborhoods. I have created a district representative manual with the five police service areas with the voting precincts that the former police chief, Ed Hargis, gave to me back while he was in office around 2013 to 2015. I noticed some of the listings had non-applicable and 0% change. I would like to understand what that means. Then there were some neighborhoods who had a minus 3.50% change. I would like to understand what that means and what voting precincts these are in. There is so much inequality going on in this city as well as favoritism. With many people living in poverty in this city, their social emphasis is to include the people he or she likes. So love and acceptance is conditional based on whether an individual is liked. Evidently, this is why no one on city council pays any attention to what I say, because I believe in managing not only my private money, but also my public money under the helm of the elected and appointed. My social emphasis is on self-governance and self-sufficiency. I don't believe in taxation without representation, which is prevalent in Portsmouth. I am requesting that someone who knows the address of the neighborhoods to please add the voting precinct to them so I can add them to my district representative manual.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Matt, and I apologize if I pronounced Blatt's name incorrectly, Matt Bakshay? Matt? Are you here? Okay. Our next speaker then is Ms. Ursula Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Ms. City Manager, Ms. City Attorney, and the rest of the city council members. So I had an interesting conversation the other night with my husband over our real estate tax assessment. And his words to me were, "Are you going to city council Tuesday night?" Now, he hates it when I come up here, because he has family in Boston that calls him and says, "What's going on in Portsmouth?" My property, and I live on Elm Hurst Lane, in the Manor View section of Portsmouth, my property in two years has gone up $50,000. I have not added on to my property. I have not improved my property, nor have I struck oil on my property. I also don't own a golf course. I'm not happy, and neither is my husband, because my husband is retired. Now, I'm going to put this in the perspective of many of our seniors, since I will join that rank in a few more months. We have a lot of seniors in this city who are not going to be able to afford that increase in their city assessment, their home assessments. So they are going to have to be faced with the decision to either buy medication or pay their real estate taxes. They're going to be faced with a choice to whether or not they're going to have to fix up the exterior of their home or pay for increased real estate assessments. Now, I'm not going to say the tax, because the tax has not increased in the last three years. It has stayed steady at $1.30. Y'all need to do something. I don't know who the assessor was that you just fired, but that was a good move. I don't care if he did uncover properties that hadn't been paying taxes. That's on somebody else a long time ago, who should have found that out. That should not be borne on the citizens today who have to pay an additional $50,000 worth of assessments on a house that has not had any improvements to it. I maintain my home, yes. In addition to my real estate tax assessments going up, my homeowner's insurance is going to go up because of this ridiculous assessment. So it is, maybe I can afford it today, a little bit, because I keep working, and I have a job that I pay for a business license in the city of Portsmouth. But a lot of our seniors cannot afford those increases. And if there's going to be an assessment, appeals date, whatever, then y'all need to hire a whole lot of people in that city assessor's office, because there's going to be a whole lot of citizens that are going to need that help. That's all I got.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor. Did you want to speak to?
No, 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 it wasn't. It's really the city manager, and I know you, math calculations, we've heard a couple of figures. So someone whose real estate taxes have, or assessment has increased, let's say $100,000, what is that on an annual basis increase about?
They have said they increased $100,000?
Yeah, because we've heard some say $100,000 increase.
Oh, we should have had anybody.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, what would that? Yeah.
Yeah, over two years.
What would that be? Is it, it's $1.30 per thousand?
Yeah, per 100, per 1,000.
Per one.
Is it per 100? Yeah.
It would be 13.
13, yeah. Okay. Okay. Because they brought up some real figures. I was just curious what we're doing.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy, I think you and your husband were probably having a similar conversation that me and my husband were having, but on the reverse end. So I've heard several speakers come and say that their property values have increased over the last two years by $50,000, $50,000, so $100,000 total. Well, me and my husband were having a conversation over the last two years that my property value decreased, and so you know my husband is pissed as I was on May 24. And a house that we had in Virginia Beach doubled, doubled. And he said, "Hey, you need to make a decision about this city council, but, you know, I'm here to serve, my business is here, my family's here, but while some of your properties were decreasing or increasing, mine decreased." And I don't feel good about that, because that means that a house that I paid money for has now lost value. So if I go to sell my house, I don't have that value in my home. So something is broken in this system. So yours might have went up $100,000, mine went down $100,000. So somewhere, something is broken. So as mad as you are on one end, I'm just as mad on the other end.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Right. I wanted those figures as well, because I heard a speaker mention that council says that real estate taxes have not increased, where the rate may not have increased, but values have. So we had a presentation earlier today from the Commissioner of Revenue. Commissioner of Revenue said he's required by state law to assess at 100% fair market value. That's the same thing that we were told by the assessor. So the issue that's facing council isn't so much of the value, it's really the rate. And so we, the ball is in our court, council has to decide how we're going to deal with this based on a rate issue. And so that's the discussion. So it can be balanced off. The issue becomes, will it fit within the budget and how do we do that?
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments? Thank you, then.
And Mr. Mayor, you know, I haven't heard any outrage over the assessment of property, personal property, because that's assessed at 100%. But I mean, that's been consistent throughout that.
Yes, sir, but they haven't, as he stated earlier, the bills don't go out.
No, I'm talking historically, that has been 100%.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Elvira Johnson-Williams.
My name is Elvira Johnson-Williams, and I live in North Truckston. I'm going to talk about this, clean up in a minute, but I want to bootleg out the Ms. Lisa Lucas Burke about phenomenal women. I have one in my life, and I'm sure a lot of you don't know, but my sister, Ms. Wilma Harper-Horn, is a Hampton graduate who has a math, science STEM building named after her in her honor at Hampton University. Now, I got that off my chest, I feel better. Good evening. I'm super excited about this coming weekend, nervous. I've never taken on anything like this before in my life, and I've even been asked for a rain date. While I'm talking to God, I'm telling everybody that I know, talk to Jesus, God, and all the disciples, so that it don't rain. As it stands right now, at my last count, I had over 21 different organizations sign up to help clean up this three-mile stretch. That does not include the private citizens that have called to be a part of this. There is a press release out. It's good, it's really good, and it should be hitting the newspapers tomorrow. I was going to reveal it, but I changed my mind. I want you all to know that I am Portsmouth proud. This was a dream of mine, and for some reason, I opened my mouth in council about what I would like to see happen in this city. The great news is this, what has happened is, for all the unwarranted division that was created in this city, I'm looking at the unity that's coming back the way I remember it to be. Portsmouth is a city, it's a jewel on its own. And I know a lot of people feel the way I do, because if they didn't, my phone wouldn't, it would not ring at all. Even though the casino is doing their fair share, so are so many people doing their fair share. I'd like to highlight the fact that we're going to have breakfast, we're going to have coffee, donuts, we're going to have sandwiches for breakfast, and then for lunch, the casino is going to feed us as well. Now, that's what I call getting it together. We getting it together, Portsmouth. Whether some of you don't want us to or not, we're going to get it together in spite of you. Regardless of how you feel, this is the way they feel, and they're going to show everybody that Portsmouth is a jewel. We're going to clean up this city, and we're starting, we're not starting this Saturday, by the way. It started last Saturday in Green Lakes. We were out there cleaning up Airline, Greenwood Drive, I don't know where else we went, but we were cleaning up. And it's going to continue this Saturday, and we're going to clean up Portsmouth Boulevard. And then I found out last night, some folks took it upon themselves, we're going to Gus Lane, going down Robin Avenue. It has really just blown up, which I think is fantastic. And then to make matters even better, the following weekend, we're going to do a citywide cleanup. Now, tell me something, is that a negative city? Is that people that don't want to get along? Because it sounds like to me, according to my phone when I can't get no sleep, it sounds like to me, everybody don't want to be a part of something that's good and great. And we are good and great together, not divided, but together. There is no me, there is no I, it is us. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Sharon Anderson. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman, our City Attorney, and our neighbors in the chambers. I am Sharon D. Anderson, and I live in the community of Ebony Heights. So I am here tonight with some positive news. The positive news is that the Ebony Heights Civic League, we are working on a summer incentive for the youth all across the city of Portsmouth. And we are in the planning process right now. So I'm here tonight to invite anyone that would be interested in our youth, making sure that they have something positive to be engaged in this summer while they're out for school. So if you're interested, I invite you to come out on Monday evening at 7:00 PM at the New Community Temple, 3615. the New Community Temple, 3615 Thomas, Bishop Thomas Way. It was changed from Tarnick Road, but most of you know where Tarnick Road is. If you get on Tarnick, you just go all the way down Tarnick to the end of the road and it's the big, beautiful church on the right-hand side at 7:00 PM. We look forward to seeing you all and as I stated before, we are in the planning process and what that entails. We have churches that have come to partner with the Ebony Heights Civic League and other organizations. And what this will entail on, during the summer, on Friday or Saturday evening or both, these organizations will host our youth across the city of Portsmouth with positive activities for at least two hours. So we are trying to be a part of the solution. We're trying to help with curbing the crime and we're thinking that if, if the youth have something to look forward to while they're out for the summer, then that will give them something to stay home. So we are trying to help with the crime in the city of Portsmouth. And I asked if you all would like to join to partner with us, please come out on Monday, March 20th at 7:00 PM at New Community Temple and that's located in Ebony Heights. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Armando Gomez. Mr. Armando Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Armando Grundy Gomez, again. I'm going to change my comments up, what I thought I was going to say. I always want to come in a good spirit and be encouraging, on the same time, sometimes I just want to look at observations when I make them. You have two new council members since last I visited with you. And I remember last time, I remember, it appears you've gone in the last several months, about three city managers, if I'm keeping count. And I do remember in a December meeting, a nice lady that came to this podium named Ms. Terry, and she said, she was not for the foolishness, whatever, I do remember that, I watched that too. And I say all that to say this, prior to last November, you, some of you would say we had dysfunction. You have two new members now and it appears sometimes there's some cognitive dissonance or dysfunction, just an observation. I, it appears from what I'm hearing tonight, from everybody out here, whether it be their values of their properties raising or the need for economic development, which you really do, that you all have some business to be done. You have a lot of things to do. I think all of you up there would agree with that statement. I don't think it's, I think you say, how can we find more money, how can we grow our money, how can we do a better job? And I think folks out here, I could be wrong, I don't want to speak for anybody, I'm sure they want you to do that. Let's, how do my taxes get lowered, how do we get more jobs, industry outside of the casino? But I say all that to say this, I think you all have better things to do than worry about who's filming who. I appreciate Councilman Hugel wanting to bring something back on Facebook, but if I was the mayor, I'm not the mayor, good-looking guy, if I'm getting filmed, I'd be worried about making sure my teeth are ting, you know, making sure I'm looking good. But I, I agreed when I watched that last meeting, I was a little disappointed, because none of you, because you have vice mayor or mayor or council member by your name, give up your First Amendment right to do any of that. And I think your city attorney knows that. I'm not going to do that, I'm not an attorney, I don't even pretend to be one on TV. I'm actually going to go to law school though, shh. But I want to encourage each and every one of you, I talked to some of you privately, I think highly, I don't know the two, Mr. Mayor, I think very highly of all of you. When I was a little kid, to see people, to, for me, from where I come from, in a little town in the south, and I may not sound like I'm from the south, but I am, to see a member of the mayor that looks like me, somebody like Dr. Whitaker, I'd look up to, somebody like Ms. Burke. Black women have given me a lot of opportunity, they have. And I want to know that it's not a shared experience. You say, just women, well, we could go down that path, but I won't. But I look up to all of you and I want to encourage you all to elevate and stop the division and really come together on small things. You have better fish to fry than who gets back at who and who did what to whom, because none of it matters. I don't know Councilman Tillis, he looks so serious all the time, I'm afraid to go say hi. Just kidding. I'm just kidding. I want to, I want to encourage all of you tonight to do a better job than to worry about, is it really that big of a deal? We have somebody missing tonight? And I don't know, Mr. Barnes seems like a very good fellow and I think highly of him, but I think highly of all of you all. But I want to ask you all to do a better job and let some things go, let the past go, move forward. We've got a lot of things to do and you all need to be the best part of yourselves, okay? Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Ms. Terry would like to make one announcement before we adjourn.
I have actually wanted to. I just want to say, it's so wonderful to be here and I just, I hear the comments, but I want you all to walk away understanding that seven council members care. They are dealing with the same things you're dealing with and they are pushing me to do better and better and better for the city of Portsmouth. Even though they, some things may not seem like it's moving fast enough, just give me a chance to get a little wing, wind beneath my wings, but they are encouraging me, they support me and I just, you know, again, we're all dealing with the same things and it's going to get better. We're getting better every day, we're getting stronger every day. But this council supports, this council cares and they want us to be a better Portsmouth. So I just wanted to mention that. Oh, Empowerment Forum. So the Empowerment Forum will be on Thursday between 6:00 and 8:00 PM at Manor High School. If you haven't registered to speak, please do. It's going to be a treat, we have a great time, we had a great time at the last forum and this is when you get a chance to really get to know your city. And so please come out, I encourage you all to be a part of the forum. And again, this is at Manor High School between 6:00 and 8:00 PM on Thursday. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no other business to conduct for this meeting, it is adjourned.